My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three different people or groups here tonight. We have the Woolsey-Wessington certified staff. I know it's more of a statement is what I'll put it, but Jason Bishop gave this to me today. And that the negotiations team this year will be Russ Utech, Tammy Myers, Jason Bishop, and Carissa Boomsma.
Correct.
Okay, so when we are, we are ready for that, that is who we will run our negotiations through this year. As far as that is concerned. Anything else to discuss at this time?
I think it's letting a judge know.
Certain honesty.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. And then we also have Travis Griffith here tonight. Who would like to talk about our progressive discipline plan. And so if you wanted to do that now, that would be a, be a good thing as well. Travis, you have the floor, sir.
Awesome. Well, I'm here with my wife, Randy Griffith, and I'd like to, I guess, talk about how I as a parent of a student in school, or three students here in the school, can get it to where our teachers or superintendent can start a little better disciplinary action, other than their hands being tied, or that they gotta suspend a student for out of school for a certain fight, or whatever happens if they could have the power, rather than this, you guys deciding what they can do and what they can't do.
So in the handbook, it was changed that for, I'll call it a fight in the middle school, they're automatically suspended for three to five days. Well, I personally just find that to be ridiculous. Little boys in locker rooms do have little pushing matches, it's what they do. I've been a mom for twenty-eight years. To automatically suspend them for five days, what, what kind of statement does that really say? Say, I, I just don't understand.
I guess.
I have two boys in sports, this is what boys do. But that's like a vacation for him. Or I take the day off because he had this, this little argument with another little boy over a girl. They're seventh graders. And I just think that the punishment needs to fit the crime, seriously. In-school suspension, make him clean something, write his I'm sorrys, just sending them out of the school, I don't see how that helps our academics. And on top of it, he's my one kid that really struggled. So now we're five days behind for this little thing that we could have handled hands-on more appropriately, and I think affected him better. And I ask that we can revisit those policies and address them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Donovan is the other one, but they got held up by traffic right now, so if that's something that we could come back to when he gets here.
Yep.
That, that would be great. So when they get here, we'll be good.
Perfect. How about the mentalist declarations? You need something added to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like nine point six substitute pay.
I have a motion to approve the agenda with adding nine point six substitute pay.
So.
Motion by Jeff. Second.
It's me.
Oh, boy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Oh. Alright, communication and discussion items, celebrations.
Catching up here. I know we got some parties going on tomorrow. With Valentine's Day and just have really been excited that HOS is really stepping up and getting things squared away for the higher school. As far as that is concerned, I've just seen a lot of, I'll say effort, not only from Mrs. Stevens, but, but the high school kids as well. So that's just been really cool. And then, you know, the, the, the other celebrations, I mean, these are, these are such small things, but they're good things at the same time. But I just wanna point out to you, at my level, the tardies are way down. And we're even down on a couple of student behaviors, which has been good. And so I've been, I've been liking that very much. And then just for me, being able to get down, down to the high school and seeing the teachers has been a really good thing. And we know the climate doesn't necessarily change overnight, but we still keep working towards it.
Administrative reports. You need?
I just have, um, it's time for elections, for petitions. And if you're not aware of that, was it the February, of course, I forget, what day, the last, February twenty-fourth, is it? The last Friday is the deadline for petitions to be turned in. That's basically all I have.
Elementary principal?
Well, one of them, I forgot, we're, we're participating with the American Heart Association. HOS is kind of leaving that up, but it's done for elementary, basically. They raise money. So if you've seen those on Facebook, they all have their little picture they've been raising money for. And we're almost at goal. We just say, the kids have voted to slime, myself and Mr. Rice, that they hit their goal. So they're pretty excited about that.
Bring it on. Bring it on.
This Friday, the seventeenth, we'll be welcoming Dr. Bobby Maher from the Learning Power Solutions and Research. Basically, she's coming, Mary Lou helped us do our needs assessment. And so she's coming to do some in-service on some of the things that we need help with, like our students doing deeper thinking questions, and then make sure we're using outcomes with our teaching. So she'll be coming that day. It's an all-day in-service. We had a wonderful time. If you weren't able to come, that's sad because he was really good. Dallas Chief Eagle was here. He was awesome. He had the kids all active and interacting, and it was, it was probably one of the coolest things, I think, that I, that I've seen in a long time. The kids had a really, really good time. We had lots of comments from parents and community members that were excited about it as well. Next week, we have another one, another artist coming. That person's gonna help paint murals. The high school will participate in that specific one, and then we're gonna hopefully do a middle school mural as well. But they'll find a place to paint that in the school. They'll be coming for a week. And now all this, we get through this South Dakota Arts Council. And they, it's a grant, and so basically they pay matching funds with us, so we pay part of it, they pay part of it. And it helps some of us smaller schools, get some of these things into our schools, so the kids can benefit from them. And I, and I actually just applied today for it again for next year, so hopefully. Usually, when you apply for this grant, you usually get it, so hopefully we have that. We have a hundred day of school coming up on February twenty-second. That's always a big day. The PTO had a snack drive that was awesome. We were getting pretty low on snacks. Especially now that the after-school program isn't ran through that grant anymore, so we really depend on those donations of money and snacks to feed some of our classroom kids, as well as our after-school program. That's what most of that money goes to. If you don't know, Honorable Woolsey had duly PM, as we talked about that, I don't know, the other month we talked about it here. And the proceeds went to the after-school program and the preschool, and they raised a little over five thousand dollars. So that was really good. It was an awesome fundraiser. I'm very thankful that they, you know, fundraised for us. That's awesome. And on February sixteenth, which I believe is Thursday, is when they'll be presenting that during a basketball game. And then we had midterms on the ninth, which was last week on Thursday. You can look at the behavior reports there, elementary and middle school. Out in building meetings, I attended the regional principals meeting in Fort Peer. Those pretty informative schools that attended are struggling to find people to work in the special education area. And so they were really talking about, um, schools are giving raises inherently incentives to those teachers and parents that are staying in that area, because it's a tough area sometimes. Rewarding, it's very rewarding, but it can be, it can be hard, so. And then we started a book study. I have about twenty-five teachers in a book study. It's also a need we found with Mary Lou Bear connecting with our students, especially in, in middle school. Making sure everybody has a connection person. It's called Emotional Poverty in All Demographics. She's a, I don't know, we've talked about her before. She's a famous speaker. She was a principal, a teacher, but she's very, very good at her job. Yep, we would saw in August, and then I took some teachers down in September, or October, maybe. And then now we're gonna do a book study. And that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
You wanna do me, or you wanna do Donovan?
Careful, do it quick, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay, very cool. Alright, you guys have my report as well. I'll get into some of the meetings and activities. But that first week of February, I was in here for the legislative session, met with the Department of Education Secretary Jill Graves, who was at Mitchell. And he came in to replace Tiffany Sanderson. In that meeting, we discussed just even getting endorsements for teachers, and also having certification issues from state to state. Because what it takes to be a teacher in South Dakota, it's a different set of endorsements or certifications than you're in Iowa, Nebraska, Minnesota. And so just really working towards a reciprocity on that. You find a lot more of that when you get to the southeastern part of the state than where we are. That was a big issue. I did get to talk to Lee Shoehnbeck, who's the president pro temp of the senate. And some of the items that came up, compulsory attendance, trying to get that back down to sixteen. That is a total mixed bag. Presidents, principals seem to be for it. A lot of superintendents are against it. I did talk to him and just kinda let him know. I said, I, to be honest with you, I'm kind of for it from this standpoint. You have the GED. You have a lot of these other places that you can go to, but the other thing too is, is maybe they get a month or two, and they realize that this life thing, or everything else, is a little difficult, and maybe I should go back to school. At eighteen, kids will do that. I've seen it enough to know that when they get out at eighteen, I don't get them back. So it's, it's just one of those things. You can do it at eighteen, you can do it at sixteen. We've even talked about a different pathway for graduation as well. You know, and, and so those are all items that are being, being considered at this point. I would say I don't see that passing this year, to be honest with you. But at, at least it's coming back up, and we do need to discuss it. Juvenile justice system, I, I would tell you that virtually every superintendent, principal struggle with that one, because the resources just are not there. Lindsay talked about emotional poverty, the whole nine yards, socially-emotional. Boy, we're just dealing with a lot of stuff right now. You could talk about broken families, or a lot of different things, but it's, we, we see a lot, you know, even in Woolsey. Just to kinda give you an idea on that. There's always voucher bills coming across. I can tell you that I do have my opinion on it. But I, I would be one to tell you that our taxes pay for public schooling. If you wanna go to private school, then you should pay for private school. So public dollars for public facilities is just kinda how I look at it. But, you know, that's something that we need to have a, a discussion about it sometime. I'm more than willing to do that. One of my big things was just the disparity between rural and urban schools right now. I likened it back to nineteen fifty-four, Brown versus the Board of Education, you know, separate is not equal between blacks and whites. Well, separate is not equal between urban and rural either. And we just don't get the resources that the numbers will give you at some of those other schools, and we need to find ways to bridge that gap as well. And so that's just something that is near and dear to my heart, you know, just as we're looking at trying to fill positions. You know, making sure those kids can have a well-rounded education. Let's see, talked a little bit, a month ago, I thought that we would get somewhere around six percent for increase next year. Kristi Mullen came at five, the South Dakota Education Association, superintendents, other administrators are coming in at eight. If I was a bad man, we would six. So, and we'll take anything and be happy. This is, this is what we're gonna do with that. Discussions on teacher shortage, there's just not a lot of student teachers in the pipeline right now. And then one thing that I believe would help greatly, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the retire-rehire policy, but there was a time when a teacher could retire, get rehired by their district, and not have a penalty on their, their retirement salary. So let's just say that I had a teacher that retired, they were making fifty thousand, and we wanted to hire him back. Well, they'd make the fifty thousand, and then whatever it is, or the, let's just say twenty-five thousand, half of what they were getting, plus the fifty that they might get. So they'd be making an extra twenty-five thousand a year on a retire-rehire. Right now, I think there's one board member in particular that's really against that. And it has gotten in the way, so let's say we had Jackie who's looking at maybe getting out. Well, if she wanted to come back, she would take a fifteen percent hit on her retirement until she totally gets out. So I would just tell you, that's about three, four hundred bucks a month for someone that's been in that home. So. Just a little different. I'm gonna go back up to, go back up there on the twenty-eighth for a meeting with a couple of the, a couple of the representatives. And then tomorrow, I have a superintendent's meeting in here on, to where we're gonna discuss possible sharing of a band teacher, which, whatever we can do, I will be in favor of. Other items on there, and I'll let you go ahead and take care of those, but just maintenance, you name it, and then just kinda giving you an idea on some numbers for next year. Where we are. We did do, we did do interviews for a custodial position. And we would like to offer a person, and we did one for the kitchen help, and we would also like to offer it. But we could talk about that quickly, and personnel, after that. Anything else? Like I said, I'll let you read if you have questions.
Alright.
Okay, Donovan is, would like to talk a little football with us.
Yes.
And a little training, so however you wanna do it, bud.
So, um, I know some of you guys have been parents, football players in the past, or if you haven't, normally our offseason goes, we have a lifting program along with an agility program. And then we have like a three-day football camp at the end of every summer. That is, like, that's our Warbird stuff. That's what parents pay for, and that's usually how we go about the summer. And as an eighth grader coming to Woolsey, and then now going into my fifth year coaching at Woolsey, it's always been an emphasis, football is, number one priority is to create young men. Number two is to get the kids prepared, and if not, if you can't get to college, find a way to get you to college using that, your athletic abilities. And then third is to win football games. And we've always had a culture focused on that, but now as we see a rise in like the internet and social media, we've kinda noticed that kids shift their cultural focus onto what they're seeing on the internet, the influence from those people, and we're trying to hit a hard reset this, this summer. And really try and flip back to what is important for us, and that's leadership, creating good young men, and respect, pride, and tradition. And so in-season, it's hard to do that because you are focused, you have to prepare for games, you have to train, you have to recover. So it doesn't really allow for a lot of time of that leadership and that character growth. So this new football program for the summer that I've come up with, it teaches the boys football skills, along with still the weightlifting and the speed training as usual. So we don't lose any of that throughout the summer. But it also adds a leadership and character aspect that would be talked about twice a week throughout the entire summer with each boy. You'll be broken down into your position groups, so if you're an offensive lineman, every day, you come in with the offensive lineman, and D lineman, and you do your lifting, you do your leadership training, and you do your football training. It'll still be about two hours that we usually do, an hour for lifting and an hour for agility. Because when you have thirty people in the weight room, it goes very slow. Where if you have six, seven groups working with an individual coach, you can get kids in and out of the weight room in twenty-five to thirty minutes. So it really cuts down on that, allowing for this time. The leadership and character building would be mainly focused on this idea of Umbutu. It is an African culture philosophy on the world, and it is, I am as we are. So it's teaching the boys, I can only be as good as I can be, as long as I treat others around me the best they can be. I help them succeed so that I can also succeed. And that's kinda where we want the football team to really hone in on and be a part of. A famous coach that uses philosophy is Doc Rivers. He believes that, he adopted it with the Celtics, and he really saw a shift in the players' characters, and just really bought in aspects. So we like that idea, and we'd like to input it. I would be in charge of it. I'd kinda be like, it would be my summer project, I'll dedicate my time and stuff. The other coaches would also stop by, help, obviously. Hayden is in charge of the offense, so for the football side of the offense, his input is obviously asked for, required, stuff like that. But it's kinda my, uh, brainchild, I came up with it, put a lot of effort into it. And the fee would be, it's not really a say yet, because it kinda depends on there was a possibility, if you guys charged me to use the school, that would go into it, stuff like that. Each kid will for sure get a T-shirt, but then there'll also be opportunities to give other gear type for it. It'll have its own name, so that the kids can really take pride in how they spent their summer. When, at the end of the summer, if they get asked, well, what'd you do this summer? They can say, I went to this football academy, and I learned how to be a young man, and I got better at football along with it. It would be four days of training, and then that fifth day, Friday, would have the possibility of like an early morning, like full group session, because again, you're always training in positions, so Friday, to be able to have the whole team together and get that team bonding is important. And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be every week, it would only be sometimes, and it would still allow the kids to leave Thursday night, early Friday mornings, and have the entire weekends to themselves. I know a lot of parents like the camp, it's always been our biggest focus in the summertime, is making sure kids have those weekends to be kids and enjoy it. The eighth grade, or the seventh and eighth graders, we talked about having a little bit smaller thing for them, but just kinda getting them into that culture, getting them started early to be a full group, all the seventh and eighth graders together like an hour a day. Just kinda getting into it, learning how to lift properly, learning what it means to be a teammate, learning stuff like that, so that when they become a freshman, it's not overwhelming for them. Along with that, the high schoolers, mainly like the juniors and seniors, as a high school football player, I remember the recruiting process, trying to get into college. And it's not necessarily overwhelming, but there's a lot of little aspects to it that you don't understand, where the smallest decision that seems completely doesn't matter could be the difference between you getting a scholarship to go play football at a school you wanna play, or not being able to. So just helping those kids understand how to talk to coaches, how to put yourself out there, where should you put yourself out there? Should you be choosing a school because of, just because of the football team? No, you have to understand, you need to know a degree, you need to know the facilities, is it an ice school, is it an ice campus, things like that. So teaching those juniors and seniors, and helping them along in that process, is, is a big thing. And I know a lot of high school coaches are trying to get more involved in that process, because sometimes you can leave kids out to dry, and then they regret the, the decisions they make, because they're, again, high schoolers. So it's a hard thing. So I just wanted to come here, kinda tell you guys about what it is, and then just see, from the school aspect, is there anything that needs to be done? Cause it would require just like one classroom, cause we'd need to be able to have like a board to do the, a lot of football work on, obviously the weight room for lifting weights, and then the field. Part of the fee too, there will be some sponsors that'll go on the T-shirts, will go on the stuff like that, to cut down on the price for scholarship-wise, but then also, traditionally, our Lift-a-thon, it has slowly declined in the profits of it. So we are hoping to revamp that and put the, whatever you make a percentage of it, so say like twenty-five percent of what you make at the Lift-a-thon, will go to your own scholarship for the summer program. So if a student wants to save their parents' money, and you work hard, get some donations, get some sponsorships through the Lift-a-thon program to reduce that price, along with whatever businesses sponsor some scholarships for that, so.
Thank you, Donovan.
Do you have a flat fee for the program, or is it by person, or?
It would be by person.
So if we have ten people or forty people?
It doesn't, it's just per, it would be like a per-person price, like, um, normally our prices are seventy-five dollars for agility and lifting, and then a hundred and fifty for that three-day Warbird camp. So that's how we usually done the summer program, it's just per person, you pay your fee, and then do it that way. I don't have like a set fee yet, because there was a couple things, like I said, if the school was gonna charge me to use a classroom, the weight room, and the field, then that would obviously factor into it. It would be, because we're doing it by position, trying to be able to focus more on each individual kid, instead of trying to teach the thirty kids, which, if you're a teacher, you understand, it's not the easiest to get to certain kids. So to be able to split them up and really connect with each individual kid is the goal. So to break that up, it would be like an eight-hour day for me, every day, like that, so that's also a factor into it.
So would this be in a, what you're doing now is just gonna be molded together?
Yes. It'll be, it'll be molded together, revamped, and try to isolate the kids more, so that each kid can really maximize the use of it.
And we'd be able to have kids recording at different times, because of, that's what you were planning to do.
Yep, we try and keep it early in the mornings and late at night for those, we, our rule, we got a lot of farm kids, a lot of kids that have to work during the summer. So keeping those afternoons available for those kids is the most important, it always has been. We've always done lifting as early as kids are willing to wake up, and done agility as late as the kids are willing to run. So it would be that same thing, you would be in, either in the morning and at night. It would be set, so you know, going into the summer, okay, I'm an offensive lineman, and D lineman, I lift at six in the morning, Monday through Thursday, I get done at eight, and then I can work after eight. So there wouldn't be surprise scheduling changes and stuff like that.
And then are they coming back in the evening?
Um, no, so.
Okay, so it's like six to eight in the morning?
So it would just be like, because for offense, you have offensive line, tight ends would probably go at the offensive line, just because it is nine-man football. Quarterbacks are two positions, running back and wide receiver, so there'd be four sessions. Each is about a two hour, so if you say, you start at six, six to eight, eight to ten, you don't wanna push it any later because of that work schedule, so then the next two groups would then go at night. So like five to seven, seven to nine-ish.
And it's just Woolsey-Wessington kids?
Yep, it would just be the Woolsey-Wessington. Yep, it would just be the Woolsey-Wessington, just our kids. So that, and that is because um each team obviously has their own way, they want to coach football. I agree, everything else applies to any kid, but when it comes to the offensive skills, like learning what this play is, what this play is, what this play is, it's all based on what Hayden wants. And the rest of the coaching staff wants taught that way.
We will, we will um have some time to discuss that at some point, but yeah, this, this is a, like you said, a breakdown and a melding.
So like your camp?
I've never heard of it.
I, I, I didn't know anything about it. So like, I had no idea that this was coming. But um so like the two hours would be like regrooming them, like one hour would be spent done and then learning like leadership teamwork, like in the classroom and then another hour. Of them actually doing like the work, like lifting.
Yeah, so there would be, um so like two days, like Monday, Wednesday would be defensive days. And uh Tuesday, Thursdays would be offensive days, nine-man football, kids go both ways, you can't just focus on one position, so they have to be on offense and defense for all four days. So um the rough schedule would be like, your hour would be football training, the first day on defense and then an hour of lifting and speed training. But then that second day defense is a half an hour football training, half an hour leadership, hour of speed and lifting stuff. So trying to not have them make it feel like it's school, not having them an hour a day in a classroom, then they're like, oh, this is a summer, I don't want to be in school. But still trying to maximize that athlete, student and young man all at the same time is important.
Thank you Donovan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a nice job.
Okay, perfect, I'm good.
Alright, Central report. We um still haven't had a meeting.
So they haven't seen any minutes for that, I didn't include the court report minutes.
Alright, yeah.
I saw the court report.
We must not have that meeting.
I, last week I saw them, I did tell them that um that social emotional thing I talked about last time. They are in the works of bringing that more accessible to us.
Any committee reports?
Um as far as buildings and grounds, um I stopped after Monday, I think, and we had water coming out of the, the downspout that dumps into the rocks. Basically just pouring water into the rocks that had to be going under the school, but it wasn't going to the west because of the grates and everything were froze up. Uh Shane, as I was leaving, I saw Tom walking around, he got a, a spout cut for that one, I don't, as he started on the west side.
We're starting to work on that too.
So trying to help with some of that drainage.
And it took a good tumble that day too.
I couldn't pick them up.
It was a hard bench press workout.
Um negotiations met, we met on the administration contracts. Um we came to an agreement that we would like to see it changed to three months pay. So it would be um no matter, once the, the contract is signed, it's three months. Their penalty would be, sorry, yeah, I was just trying to get them worked out, but yes, liquidated damages would be three months of their pay.
This is a straight deal. Nope, yeah, I charted it out like.
Nope. Correct, is that what, yep, okay.
Get your contract.
Yep, for any future. So we did come up with that, any discussion on that? Have they had any issues with that? Okay, any other committee reports? Alright, moving on, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Jim, second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. We didn't pull anything off. Um action items, nine point one parking. Um I forwarded you guys a letter that we received from some staff member. I'm just gonna put out there, I don't, like I'm okay with them parking in their own. Uh my main concern when I got the letter is they mentioned that it is unsafe for them to bring their children across the parking lot. I send my fourteen-year-old with my six-year-old to school every day, um that is a huge concern for me as a parent. To know that it's unsafe for staff to bring, for adults to bring their children into the front door and I'm allowing my child to bring my other child. So if that truly is a concern, I would like that addressed because as, as a parent, that does, that did very much concern me really a lot. Um other than where they park, I'm okay with, I don't, you know, that doesn't bother me as long as we have students coming in one door. And we know that our students are safe, our staff is safe.
Yep.
So. Everybody else get to read it? Anybody else have any comments?
What, I'm sorry, what parking lot is that that she feels or whoever feels unsafe? Is it the main one between the gym and the, I'm assuming this one?
There's, there's traffic and, but the, the traffic was the same at the beginning of the year too. It's just with the additional ice and everything else, I think that's part of what they were getting at and the fact that uh, you know, just that here's the two lots that you can go. So I, the one thing that I noticed and I've had a couple of comments on just service vehicles saying it's nice to be able to get in so easy. That part, which and down the road, we're going to be shutting that road down eventually anyway once we get going. So my thought was, might as well get used to it. And uh but opened up all the other doors, you just have to make sure we're not propping them open for other people because we had people that were doing that, which creates an unsafe situation. Uh the other thing too is, is that um, not that I am what I would call in attendance Nazi, but my teachers are doing a great job of being here on time. And timeliness has been a problem in the past, not for everybody, but just for some. So uh that, that's why the, the email went out and said, there are more than five, you can go through the doors you want, but here are the locks that you can use.
I have a little bit of an issue with just a free-for-all. You know, if we use the front door, the back door, we've still got custodians that are trying to keep the facility clean. If you're gonna have dirt on your feet if you park back here, if you park out front, if you park on the sides. I don't think we need to be tracking in every single door that the school has, you know, coming in the backside of the gym, the other side of the gym. I think we could probably get it down to two, maybe three doors at most. You know, I don't think we need to have a, and the other thing with the, you know, using the one door. It's not so much the, the teacher's side, but just a physical security side of the school, you know, in the event that. We had an incident that we've had in the past. You know, there's a lot of weird things that go on, that are going on right now. You know, I would like to see the doors we use, we doors that we have cameras on.
Is the only doors, the front door and this door between the?
Some of us use, I mean, I park, I'm far enough, but I think some of the staff members are parked down here. And you're carrying a lot of stuff or some are bringing a lot of little kids with them. So like they come up the stairs and then this door instead of walking up the icy sidewalk or honey all the way to that staff door. They just come in this door here, I think that was what, I don't know if that answers the question. But on the staff side, I know that's something.
Well, I know that we have hall waiting rooms, but I would have to go and just see if that's something that we would need to do in the issue.
And the only other thing would be I would maybe have, get a hold of Mike Green, you know, whether the parking is full back here. Just to make sure that he has no problem getting in with emergency vehicle. You know, if something were to, to happen and you need to get a.
We have had it more than once. Sorry for voice.
That's the entrance over there where the dumpsters used to be you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Where the old, where the kitchen and all that activity used to happen, right? I wonder where you were talking.
That's where the kitchen used to be.
Right.
There was a dumpster there too.
Right, in between the long deal.
Kitchen used to be where the staff launches, that was the old kitchen.
That's the.
The deliveries were there again, because we had to keep it there at that point because. Was the.
Gotcha, that's who you're talking about.
Any other comments on that? Alright, snow days.
Uh one of the things that was brought to me was about the possibility to make up days during the, the year that weren't necessarily the snow makeup days, but it was out of Fridays, correct? And my, my first mention would then we have the snow days because that's what has been negotiated, contracted. I don't have an issue with it personally, but what uh parents might have an issue is, hey, we have all this stuff scheduled and now you're saying it's a school day.
That was stuff, pretty much was my thing, but anything else you guys would like to add, I'm fine with.
Well, I, I think we talked about it as a staff because the last couple of meetings, you guys had a negotiated agreement. So we talked about it as a pushing, or you know, as the teachers. And we just said, you know, to make up these Fridays and I think you could tell parents in advance, otherwise, I mean, we're at Memorial Day. And going after Memorial Day. And I think too, everybody would like a plan as to when those snow days are going to happen, so we kind of know. And as elementary teachers and I think Keith would probably agree, it's easier right now, we're going with our content, we're in a group, we have our schedules. And those Fridays might be easier to get in than the end of May, if you know, it's at the end of May, it's tough. Um so we just don't know what all the snow days are making up and we were just trying to be proactive and look at the calendar and say, you know, we know we have one snow day makeup. But could we add in another Friday in one of our teacher Fridays? And I think even the high school staff talked about how to, you know, get those kids that need that help, that help on those days. So we were just open for options, I know someone had brought that up in the December meeting, if we could do those on the Fridays. And we talked about it being negotiated, so that's just kind of the teacher's perspective.
Yeah, the uh, so I, I guess now you'll have to, if I'm not speaking your language, then tell me. So, because we have those certain teacher Fridays that are already, like the one day in January, the one in February, the one in March. You're talking about anything after that, like if you have to go into the end of the school year, you just would rather not, it would just be the other Fridays.
Well, yeah, and we're looking at like state basketball, we have to make that, those are more days to make up and I think there's still another one that we have. We're not sharing all the days that we need to make up. So if we need to use the April one, if we need to use the May one, like those are there, but like say we have a snow day tomorrow or Wednesday. You know, there's a possibility that there could be many more.
Right.
And we just want to be proactive in saying like, yeah, let's go on a Friday, you know.
In the future years then, you're, you could, you'd have that pre-plugged into the whole calendar for the upcoming year as well?
I guess that's questionable, just, you know, it's hard because like last year, I don't think we used any snow days. You know, this year's different. And like the department then, you're kind of thinking, oh, the whole state was almost three days in December, but we're making them up, so.
Some years they just.
Yeah, so they did some, yeah.
And we're still waiting to hear on that too.
We currently have all of our snow days used, correct? Like every single Friday that we have allotted.
I don't think we have one in May.
So um my suggestion would also be to use Fridays, teacher Fridays, because I don't think it's very hard for children to go when it's nice. Um and I mean, we also farm, so.
As long as you're good with it, as long as you're good with it guys, I can be good with it.
Yeah, that's probably not an unreasonable.
The summer's already too short.
Correct, right.
Yeah.
Starting mid-August.
One concern, I guess, that's, one concern before we forget is, you know, we have some teachers that have planned vacations, say on, in a certain Friday. And they only have, you know, they're planning on their vacation to be a half teacher day, that might be something that has to be talked about because it's being uh brought up on a whim that we're going to school. Something about that.
They, where they were planning on being able to leave at noon and now it's four o'clock.
Yes, and then they have a full day and they've already, you know, they're using other personal days or sick days or whatever it is, so. There might be a few instances like that, they would have to work out with the A P areas or whatever, but.
And I really think if you would put it out there, like you have decided this, if we have any more snow days, we're going to use our teacher Fridays instead of going later.
As long as you guys are good with it, I will be fine.
And I think.
And then if there's personal, if there's personal things that come up, then just let them know and.
So we are going in April?
I'm sure that Friday in April we have to use.
Well, I don't, I, we haven't been.
We haven't been informed.
Yeah, we didn't know that, so that's like a three days of our channel from in March.
Yeah, we've got those taken care of for sure and then we're talking.
So we are the May one too?
Well, I'd rather use the April one.
Well, yeah.
We can get a Friday's done instead of the May one. Yeah, that's it. And we're good on ours, just so you know. We're good on ours.
But hopefully we have a couple more days that we have to miss, so.
Alright, that's, that's.
That would be a nice problem.
Um so would it be your, guys, is the teacher's recommendation that you want to use Fridays, teacher Fridays currently instead of the snow day in April? Is that what you're asking?
No, we do the snow day in April, we just haven't told we're going.
We just, right, we don't want to go into May.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
When is that, when is that snow day in April?
It's like snow to now, I don't have any knowledge of it.
Yeah, it's late.
So we'll want to use a, we'll want to like move it up, so.
But you would know in like a bird's wing in March if we're gonna miss any more days. So, yeah.
But even like if we have a snow day, say, come up this week, I don't, I'm not chasing this. You know, but if we could put that teacher's snow, teacher's snow day makeup earlier in the year, so you still have some of those, you know, go in April or go on in the last one in March.
And I, yep.
I was gonna look at the calendar, but.
I would just ask that maybe you give like, we have a snow day, we're not telling parents, hey, we're having school this Friday.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give plenty of leave there.
Yep, that's the only thing I ask. Alright. School calendar?
We are, uh had just recently sent out three different copies or versions of a calendar uh for the teachers to take a look at. Uh all of the calendars are right around a hundred and fifty days for the students, a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and fifty. Uh to give you an idea, you need nine hundred and sixty-two point five hours at a minimum in the middle school, high school for the hours. Uh all of these calendars are uh I would say at a thousand hours or better. So we have time that's built in as far as that is concerned. And then the staff hours, of course, they go uh basically a hundred and seventy-five. And everything's built into all three calendars and then they have voted and then we're just gonna kind of take a look at if there's anything else we need to adjust in between. But we will be over by a good forty hours as far as that, so that's a week's worth of instruction. So it's already just built in and that if we run into any other problems, we'll be able to, to adjust with it. But uh it's, all, all three calendars were pretty solid, it's just gonna go by uh what the preferences. And then one calendar, the two calendars had seventy days in the first semester and then seventy-eight in the second. And then there was another one that had seventy-five in each semester. So your semester test will still be done before Christmas. Okay? Alright.
Um contracts we're gonna discuss in executive session, I'll make that motion after. Uh resignations, somebody have a copy of them to read?
I sent them all to you. I sent them all to you.
Do you have a copy of them?
There, there was a case for serious two.
Yeah.
And Nancy.
And I brought answers.
I have, alright.
No, there's a.
Jackie's?
Nancy said it was the guy who was the last one?
All right. This letter is to inform you that the, with the greatest reluctance, I offer my resignation from my position as English and Drama Instructor. Oral and Turf Coach and One Act Play Director. Would like to thank the administration and board, past and present, for the greatest and most enjoyable opportunity of my life. I will sincerely miss my position here and the wonderful people I have encountered, but retirement moves. Um, that is from Mrs. Fow. Next one is from Carissa Boomsma. This letter is to inform you that with Jackie's retirement, I offer my resignation for Assistant Oral and Turf Coach. I have greatly enjoyed working with the high school students and Jackie with Oral and Turf. Thank you for allowing me the experience and opportunity. Um, the last one is from Nancy Clauzer. It says, dear school board and Mr. Rice, I enjoy working in the kitchen with Marilyn, Marine and Lynette. It is more work than I ever realized, I was told it would be preparing, serving and cleanup and it is. I never thought about the lifting, I don't think people know that the kitchen helps lifts up to sixty pounds and have limited space to do it. In freezer. I really thought I was in good shape, I feel you could not ask for a better crew. I love being able to see the students every day, their smiles are big uplift feeling to me. With regret, I will not be renewing my contract for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four. I am not in as good of shape as I thought, my biggest problem, and I believe Mr. Rice is aware of this, is my feet. Never had trouble with them before, but I also never stood on concrete floors for eight hours or more at a time. I have stood for up to ten hours at a time while working, but it was un padded and carpet covered concrete floor. I am not a quitter, when I apply for a job, I do somewhat plan to stay for a while, so it is hard for me to quit after only one school year. At this stage in my life, I was excited to work for nine months a year and have my summers off. I will look for part-time work, if I am not successful, I would like to be considered as a substitute for the kitchen or classroom. I have never substituted before, but I have talked to Randy about the requirements. As of January first, twenty twenty-three, I will be covered by Medicare for Insurance, so I will not need the school's health insurance. I would like to stand in the I plan if possible, I will gladly pay the premiums. I want to thank Mr. Rice and the school board for the opportunity to work at the school. Um. So I have a motion. To accept all three resignations, Mrs. Fow. For English, Drama Instructor, Oral and Turf Coach and One Act Play Director. Carissa Boomsma for Assistant Oral and Turf Coach and Nancy Clauzer for Kitchen Staff.
So who?
Motion by Kevin.
So Kevin? Jeff.
Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Like to thank all three for their time, um.
We figured out something good for Jackie.
Yeah, she's gonna be missed, that's for sure. All right, at this time we'll go into nine points. Nine point six substitute pay.
Okay, I totally forgot to put this on the section, I knew I was forgetting something. I would like to make the recommendation that we increase, um, substitute pay, um, for every level to ten more dollars. And the reasoning is because uh minimum wage went up to ten dollars and eighty cents. At the first of the year and right now our para, um. Paras, if you suffer a para or an hourly person, that's eighty dollars an hour, which that does not mean the minimum wage.
Eighty dollars a day.
Eighty dollars a day.
He's gonna say awesome.
I mean, eighty dollars a day, so. And so if we increase by ten, that'd bring it up to the na, you know, ninety, so if we just do all of them, you know, for certified and non-certified and everything. Then that would be this.
What's the price for certified, what will it go to? Hundred thirty?
So. Right now, if you are a non-certified, s- non-certified subbing for a teacher. It's ninety-five dollars a day, if you are certified in substituting, it's a hundred and ten dollars a day. No, wait, that's after.
After, that's.
At, that's the long term. Or no, that's a hundred, that was right, a hundred and ten, but um long term was a hundred and twenty-five. And then substitute for para cooks and janitors is eighty dollars a day.
Okay, so para pay will go up to ninety? Yes. Non-certified subbing for a certified will go up to a hundred and five?
Yes.
Certified subbing for a certified will go to a hundred and twenty?
And then the long term would be a hundred and thirty-five?
Long term pay will go to a hundred and thirty-five? Okay. Any discussion on this? I have a motion to approve the following, ninety dollars para pay, hundred and five non-certified, subbing for a certified staff. Hundred and twenty dollars a day, certified staff, subbing for certified staff, hundred and thirty-five dollars a day for long term, so.
I understand.
Okay. Uh, motion by Jim. Do you sub anymore? Okay. Second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, item ten, executive second. Now, we've got a contract law one dash twenty-five dash two, uh personnel, have a motion. Second.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kevin.
Okay, I'm recording.
All right, do I have a motion to um offer two kitchen staff and one custodial position?
So.
Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Jim, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn at six fifty-six?
Motion.
Motion by Jamie. Second.
Second.
By Jim, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carried.
Thank you.